I make a motion to approve those.
Motion on the floor by Steph to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Mike, all of them in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, both, carried unanimously. We have our December 20th regularly scheduled council meeting minutes. We have any additions or corrections? We will move to a motion approved.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second.
Second by Stephanie, all of them in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. At this point in the meeting, we're going to be doing a switch over. We are going to be swearing in two council members and the mayor.
I'll give the first. I have to approve the agenda.
No, the new council should be approving the agenda. No additions.
Come on, we're gonna lay, you can make that motion.
But first, I'd kind of like to just ask Stephanie and Mike to say a couple of quick words. Both council members, for a lot of years Stephanie and I got elected at the same time, 12 years ago. Mike's been on and off the council as a mayor and council member. So if you guys would please just say a word to him. I appreciate it.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to serve the city for the last 12 years. It's been an experience, some good, some bad, but it's been an awesome time. I have had some great council members to work with. I have had an excellent, excellent group of city staff employees who have made me look good on the council. I could not do this job without them backing us up. And I want to thank each and every one of you guys for doing such an awesome job for us. And I want you to keep on doing an awesome job for the new council. And like I say, thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Peers. And I was glad I could do it. Thanks, though.
Michael.
Like you said, reiterate what Steph said. Yes, thank everybody. I've been here many years in many different forms, shapes. And yeah, staff has been over the years. Right now, I think we've assembled one of the best staffs we have, all the way to the fire chief and the police chief. We've got a good, good staff. Everybody's working together for that common goal and keep working for the new council. Steph and I may be gone, but you know, we're still residents. Mike come and voice their opinion. But thank everybody again. And to the residents, I mean, we were here elected by the residents and hopefully we've held up to their standards. And that's who we, we look for, the whole betterment of the community as a whole. From retailers to the business end of town to the residents and let's keep Peers moving forward.
Just a quick one for me. I'd also like to thank the staff. I agree with these guys. I believe they're some of the best staffs the city can possibly have. How fortunate we are in a city our size to have such a highly intelligent staff with a great deal of integrity and honesty. Very hard work, so thanks to all the staff. Council members, I wish I could say I enjoyed working with all of them. But really, I have. We don't always see eye to eye, but I enjoyed very much the experience and thank you guys for serving as well. You guys have been awesome. Thank constituents. And I can thank everyone as well. I'm happy to say we're leading the city. We look at the city in very good financial shape. One of the best I've seen in the state for cities our size. We created a lot of economic development, we gave a lot of opportunities for business. We did a great deal as far as cleaning up our city and making it a more people-friendly place to both live and business. Something I'm very proud of. So with that said, at this point in time, we are going to be swearing in some new members. First of all, I think we can leave. First of all, hold on before you can leave.
Well, we're just gonna move outside.
Yeah.
We are.
Before I can swear anybody in, I would like a motion from Dave or Kyle to dismiss the existing city council.
Wait, call it, they can't dismiss you if you don't, because you gotta swear the new one in.
I can't do that as a citizen?
No.
You can dismiss.
We're not gonna, we're just gonna watch.
We're gonna watch.
I make a motion to dismiss Mike and Steph and thank them for their year of service. It's been a pleasure working with them for two years for me, so.
And I'll second that motion and I'll second everything he said. It's been a pleasure. They have served this community great over the years. We're gonna miss them.
Motion on the floor by Kyle, second by Dave, all of them in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, carried unanimously. With that, we have a council member. Just gonna kind of grab these the way Nicole had them way out. Don Majewski. Donnie, if you'd please stand, approach us. Raise your right hand. I, Don Majewski.
I, Don Majewski.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member.
In the City of Peers and in the State of Minnesota.
In the City of Peers and in the State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, Don. You can do it. Will you raise your right hand? I, Linda Shabuzki.
I, Linda Shabuzki.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of Treasurer of the City of Peers.
The duties of the Office of Treasurer of the City of Peers.
And to the State of Minnesota.
And to the State of Minnesota.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, thank you.
This has got to be the first.
Please raise your right hand.
For what she's gonna do, you can tell her to do.
All the time.
Only because you'd bomb my law.
I, Lynn Egan.
I, Lynn Egan.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office.
And I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office.
Of the new year and the City of Peers.
Of the new year and the City of Peers.
The State of Minnesota.
The State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, Dave. At this time, I would make a motion to excuse Toby and same thank you goes out to Toby. It's been a pleasure working with him. Learned a lot from him in only two years, so thank you.
I'll second that motion and I again will thank you a lot, Toby. I've learned a lot from you also. And you're not going far, so hopefully we can still win. Again, thank you very much.
Motion on the floor by Kyle, second by Dave, all of them in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously. Good luck to the new council.
First thing I'd like to do is have a short recess and then we'll come back and continue with some more swearing in of positions. So at this time, I'll take a short recess, so get everything changed around the table and we'll be back in a couple minutes. Let's start with agenda changes. Do we have any agenda to be, any changes to be agenda to make?
This afternoon, we received the Department of State of Minnesota's request to add that to the schedule.
We have that under scheduled workshop.
Other than that, do you not have anything?
We also have the courtesy taxation. It's April 20th, we talked about that in class. We talked about.
Foreign people taxation.
Foreign people taxation. And we have two new members licensed for that.
Did you want to table the designations?
And also you two.
We can do that too. What's that?
You want to table the designated, not shake it off the.
Right.
Agenda hour, you want to wait?
We'll wait till we get to that.
Okay.
Then this time, I'd like to move forward with a couple of awards. We have gotten some plaques for our outgoing council members and mayor. I'll start with Steph, so Steph, if you would, come back up one more time. Steph's been on the council for eight years. I only get the opportunity to work with her for two, but she's, she's been a great council member. She's been great for the City of Peers. She's made it clear she's not going far. We know where she lives, she's here, she's here. Steph, eight years, has a strong dedication and commitment to the city. On behalf of the community, I have to thank her very much.
Thank you very much. Again, it's been a pleasure to be able to serve the City of Peers. I really appreciate the opportunity that it pretty has given me and it's been a great 12 years. Thank you.
Mr. Mike.
Four eight, four eight.
Twelve years. I read that wrong. Mike's been on the council for eight years and there was a mayor for eight years. He's got 16 years of split service. Again, the dedication Mike has done, the time he's put into this community, it's just irreplaceable. His knowledge of the community is great. We still have that out there. We still have hope to lead on here from time to time. Mike's been on a lot of very important committees and a lot of things have happened in the community, you know, with him being in charge or as mayor and as on the council. So, Michael, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Twelve years as mayor, Toby, and that's a lot. I've been on the council for two years and I can't beat being around here for 12 years. So to put in the time and the work that you have put in. Somebody asked me when I got on the council a couple of years ago, will that be a couple hours a week of work for you? It's a couple hours. No, it's not. I think if you look at the pay that Toby has received over the last 12 years and you average out his hours, I think he'd be getting a raise this week with minimum wage increases, so. That's a bit a whole lot per hour. Your dedication to the city, Toby, unreal and extremely great. Again, he's not going far. We have him moving on. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take another short recess if you'd like and we'll regroup in a couple minutes. Let's bring the council meetings back to order. At this time, I'd like to read a resolution and fill the clerk position which is now open. The resolution would read as this. Whereas incumbent city clerk Dave Fisher was sworn in as mayor of Peers on January 14th, 2019. Whereas mayor Fisher is automatically resigned for the office of city clerk upon his swearing in as mayor because of offices of city clerk and mayor are incompatible. Whereas the term of the present city clerk was scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2020 and the office of city clerk is made vacant by mayor Fisher's resignation. Whereas the city council has the authority to appoint the person to fill the unexpired position of the city clerk's term. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 412.02, Subdivision 2A. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Peers, Minnesota as follows. The council appoints Kyle Bender to hold the office of city clerk for the unexpired portion of the city clerk's present term. Passed by the city council of Peers, Minnesota this 14th day of January, 2019. I'll have a rude discussion on that. I did approach Kyle after the election and ask if he would be willing to step over and do the clerk position. Some of Kyle's background fits well with that position he has agreed to. We discussed it earlier this evening with Lightning Lynn and they agreed to that position as well, so.
Yeah, I didn't get in on that one.
Because that would have been a form.
No, you said Mike instead of Don.
I think you. At this time, I would take a motion to accept that resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
Motion's been made by Donnie and seconded by Lynn to accept the resolution number 114201901. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay, at this time, we'll move forward with swearing Kyle into his new position. So Kyle, if you would please stand and raise your hand. I, Kyle Bender.
I, Kyle Bender.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office.
And I will discharge faithfully the duties of the City of Peers.
In the City of Peers.
In the City of Peers.
The State of Minnesota.
The State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So what that does is leaves a council position open. Again, in the earlier meeting tonight, we had three people that had shown an interest in being on the council. All three we thought would do a great job. We have decided to move forward with bringing Jackie Ballou onto our council. So at this time, Kyle, if you would, make the resolution to break her off.
I declare a vacancy. Want me to read that one? Okay. So, resolution number 01142019-02. A resolution declaring a vacancy on the Peers City Council. Whereas Kyle Bednar, a member of the Peers City Council, had been appointed by the Peers City Council to the office of city clerk for the unexpired portion of the present term of the city clerk. Whereas Kyle Bednar was sworn in as city clerk on January 14th, 2019. Whereas the offices of council member and city clerk are incompatible. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Peers, Minnesota as follows. Kyle Bednar is automatically resigned from the office of city council member by appointment to the office of city clerk. The council declares that a vacancy exists on the city council effective on January 14th, 2019. Passed by the city council of Peers, Minnesota this 14th day of January, 2019.
I would make the, entertain a motion to accept that resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
And I'll second it.
Motion was made by Lynn, seconded by Donnie to accept the resolution number 1142019-03. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jackie, come forward if you would please.
I.
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 Okay.
So, resolution number 01142019-03. A resolution appointing council member. Whereas incumbent council member Kyle Bednar was sworn in as city clerk of Peers on January 14th, 2019. Whereas city clerk Kyle Bednar is automatically resigned from the office of council member upon his swearing in as city clerk because of the offices of council member and city clerk are incompatible. Whereas the term of the present council member was scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2020 and the office of council member is made vacant by council member Kyle Bednar's resignation. Whereas the city council has the authority to appoint a person to fill the unexpired portion of the council member's term pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 412.02, Subdivision 2A. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Peers, Minnesota as follows. The council appoints Jackie Ballou to hold the office of council member for the unexpired portion of the city council members' present term. Passed by the city council of Peers, Minnesota this 14th day of January, 2019.
So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
And I'll second it.
Motion was made by Lynn, seconded by Donnie to accept the resolution number 1142019-03. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Jackie, come forward if you would please.
I.
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 Okay. Okay, so there's.
Sorry, that was to clear the vacancy, now we have to.
Okay, I'm sure.
Sorry.
Lots of resolutions. All right, resolution number 01142019-03. A resolution appointing council member. Whereas incumbent council member Kyle Bednar was sworn in as city clerk of Peers on January 14th, 2019. Whereas city clerk Kyle Bednar is automatically resigned from the office of council member upon his swearing in as city clerk because of the offices of council member and city clerk are incompatible. Whereas the term of the present council member was scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2020 and the office of council member is made vacant by council member Kyle Bednar's resignation. Whereas the city council has the authority to appoint a person to fill the unexpired portion of the council member's term pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 412.02, Subdivision 2A. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Peers, Minnesota as follows. The council appoints Jackie Ballou to hold the office of council member for the unexpired portion of the city council members' present term. Passed by the city council of Peers, Minnesota this 14th day of January, 2019.
So I would entertain a motion.
I'll take that motion.
Resolution.
I'll second that.
By Donnie, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, now we can swear.
You ready?
Yeah. Jackie, sorry for making you stand there all that time. Please raise your right hand. No, you're not.
I, Jackie Ballou.
I, Jackie Ballou.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
In the City of Peers.
In the City of Peers.
The State of Minnesota.
The State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you don't get to leave, no.
That's okay.
Now the work begins.
Yep, nice.
Next item on the agenda is the 2019 annual designations and appointments. And I'd like, with the new council being seated, with the changes taking place, not knowing who was gonna be on the council until 15, 20 minutes ago. I haven't had a chance to firm up the committee chair, so I would entertain a motion to table that.
I'll make a motion to table the annual designation appointments.
I'll make a motion to table the designation by Kyle, seconded by Lynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. 2019 City of Peers fee schedule. That we can approve for this evening and that going to go through them. It's about three pages of them. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at them.
There are only a few.
Some, a few changes, I see. Yeah, you want to.
They're in red.
They're in red. Security for light, 26 to 24 all. We control.
So the red was removed and the new, what's supposed to be blue. And then the same, you can have your tablets.
I will look for a motion to approve the 56th schedule. City of Peers fee schedule.
I'll make that motion.
Motion was made by Donnie.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Kyle to approve the 2019 City of Peers fee schedule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Morsham County Record Legal Bill. Yeah, I have it. It's from the B.
Yes.
In giving a letter.
Sorry.
I have it. With it. This is a sealed bid. I'm hoping it right hand. And I will be back. Bids for publishing local government legal item in 2019. We respectfully submit the following bid for publication of your legal items in 2019. It is the same rate quoted all government units within our legal jurisdiction. The maximum legal rate allowed by the State of Minnesota for the record in 2019 is 30 cents per word or a dollar fifty per line. Most, if not all, local governments with one legal newspaper are paying the maximum rate allowed by law. We are pleased that we can continue providing savings from these maximum rates for our local units of governments. Our bid for 2019 is line rate 91 cents per line, display ad rate $7.60 per column inch. We remind you that the record continues to serve you with over 19,000 independently audited circulation that saturates the Morsham County and points beyond. Our CVC audit indicates that a publisher's delivery system reaches 97.8% of its defined market. A file verification has a margin of error of plus minus 1.3% or a 95% confidence level. As an added benefit, all legal advertising is posted on our award-winning website, www.mcrecord.com, and no additional charges. Our website now has more than 38,983 unique visitors per month. Donnie will be supplied as required upon bid approval. Thank you for your consideration of our bid. If you have any questions, please contact Juvia. This is Espino.
Espino.
Espino at 320-632-2345. That's from Carter Meyer, the general manager of the Morsham County Record. And that is the only bid we have. So, rude discussion. How often do we renew?
Every year we begin in January and I think it is last year's rate. I suppose.
Last year's rates, right here. Last year's rates, good things. Almost 89 cents versus this year's 91 cents. The display had a 7.45 per column inch versus 7.60, so it's gone up 2 cents on the line rate and 15 cents.
I don't know that we really have any other options.
You're a quick study pal.
Yes.
So, I would entertain a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to accept Morrison County's bid.
I second.
Motion was made by Kyle, seconded by Jackie to accept the Morrison County Record Legal Bid. All in favor, if you'd like to say aye. Opposed? Exempt permit from Horizon Health. And do you know exactly what this is for?
It just says a raffle.
Okay, it does say raffle.
It's a two letters.
Okay. We don't know what kind of raffle it is. We'll let you check.
I'll make the motion to approve the exempt permit for Horizon Health.
Motion was made by Kyle to approve the exempt permit for Horizon Health. I'll second that. Seconded by Donnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Morrison County Main, Morrison County Main Society, we tabled this from last month. We got a letter with the arrangement of the main society. Opposed? Do you have that? Can you share those rates with us?
Yes, so previously the rate was 19, over 1974. And this year is actually 1276. Yep, and so we've actually budgeted for. Yep, and so we've actually budgeted for the latter with a higher amount. And we've probably used it, Eric, and we're gonna use it Friday.
We've used it, I think, maybe four to five times last year, which is actually more than we usually do. But it's, it's our only resource, it's our only option to take a stray cat or dog to keep it legally in Minnesota.
And at the last meeting, we had tabled that for Eric to check into it, he's done that. Um, I think I indicated that, and it's, it's really a donation on our part for the Peace Society going. It does help the citizens.
Yep.
So that they could bring you a dog, if you can catch a stray animal without.
Charge.
Pay the fee.
Yep, and if there was to run another owner pet, however, it would be thirty-five for a cat, fifty for a dog.
I will look for a motion to approve that.
I motion to approve that.
Motion made by Jackie, seconded by.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lynn, to approve Morrison County Mean Society contract, all in favor, indicate, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Freedom Fest sponsorship. In the past, we have sponsored Freedom Fest, which is just a great entity put on by the commercial club, absolutely, uh, great community. Does a lot of wonderful things, I don't mind, you've been very involved in that.
Yeah, I can't be the one representing Freedom Fest tonight. So I'll be getting, uh, I even got a raise on the council, so now I'm gonna ask for money for a commercial club.
So we're taking all that money that we didn't get, like, for a raise for the last fifteen years.
I'd say we donate five hundred bucks.
Are you making that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Donnie, we donate five hundred dollars to the Pierce Freedom Fest.
I'll.
Thanks, my Kyle. All in favor, indicate, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, I'd like to give a workshop scheduled here, uh, with the new council, so we go through several things, because we have some people on board. Um, I'm thinking, uh, time to do that would be, uh, we're in the second Monday right now, will be next Monday, the first. That work for everybody? Next Monday at six o'clock.
So you wanna do, or do you wanna do it before the next council meeting?
No, because we, if we did it before the next council meeting, we might, uh, I don't know, so. But I, I'd like to go through a few things, we talked about, uh, committee designations, that nature.
Well.
Well.
Uh, yeah, I won't have a problem.
I think it's on the twenty-third, like.
Six o'clock work, Linda? That work too? Jackie?
Yep.
I would indicate a motion to that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Lynn, seconded by, uh, council workshop for next Monday, the twenty-first at six o'clock.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Donnie, all in favor, indicate, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So our new item on the agenda, commercial club.
Yes, so we have a member, or two nineteen, a membership due, or if you want us to be a part of the commercial club, it's a hundred dollars.
And we have been a member of the commercial club in the past, in the few years. Uh, I know, I personally have been a member of the commercial club, Kyle has been a member. Good thing, uh, the commercial club has done a lot of great things for this community over the last, you know, ten years, Freedom Fest, Rock. Roll, Stroll, St. Ichman, they've really added a lot of things to their check itself. I, it might be my opinion that we should create a new membership.
Everybody who comes for that Rock, Roll and Stroll night, and all the other events we're on, they can't, I mean, they say there's not many other communities out there who put on such good.
It's bigger and bigger.
Yeah, so.
And they also, and they also leave with good taste in their mouth.
Absolutely. So we just need to approve each member's. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve that we can do more membership in the commercial club.
Motion's been made by Kyle, we do, we do our membership in the commercial club.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jackie, all in favor, indicate, I say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, Board of True Intention, that is kind of a viable point, we have that every year. Um, we need to have one licensed, uh, council member there. I am currently licensed, Kyle is currently licensed, we are on our second year of that. Take truth, you, once you do the training, you go through, you do it for two years.
Online, right?
Okay, do it online, it takes about fifteen to twenty minutes. My suggestion outside. Maybe it was a little longer. Maybe your memory is better than mine. But I, I, I think the goal would be to get the other council members, uh, up to date on that, so that in case Kyle or I can't make it, if we can't solve. I, I think, we don't have to remove, I think that's just a recommendation.
I guess.
Yep. Okay, Department of Reports. Start with the fire chief, Chris, you're first.
I'd like to congratulate all the new council members. Just a quick report, uh, end of the year for us, we finished fifty-one runs down from sixty-eight last year, so. That was in the city, I believe. A couple of runs. What's going on? Five new members who are, uh. Almost completed their training, the first week in February they'll be done. And they'll be alive, burn, burn house in March, I believe. The end of their training. They were hired in March, so they're gonna be done, they're on their probation. And this, they're so, they're doing a great job, they're working a lot of times.
Hold on, the whole shit, the whole shit, you're going to first?
Yep.
Right next door.
Well, let's take care of that.
And then the other thing we've got going on is, uh, inside the, our meeting room, we've been working on a little remodeling, apparently something that the members have kind of taken on themselves, and we're. Doing, uh, new floors, Kyle, yeah, and appliances, all that stuff. And it's, uh, projectable, but it was your charity looking, they're gonna, they're putting it on, they have. Projectable members can take pride in, in our space, our area. Good site and project, Eric, nice update. One thing with that, we're looking at, I am, I've got a proposal here from Jim T. to the mayor for air conditioning for that. Remark, there's some ones for our meetings, training nights, so we use it, first response to the global problem occasionally, see if that's being valued, faces open, so. I got a proposal here for thirty-six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. I have checked the grant, I have to find the mutual, and really would be, we'll do a cap on that, fifty, so it would be as well. So, I'm asking you to, with the, many split air conditioning unit, and, uh, fire all.
You also have Jim's TV unit?
Yeah.
That, that proposal, the wiring, the electric work installation.
That part, it includes all installations other than wiring, that is, so it's not included here, but we would take care of that through the project we're doing, so. Half of this would be the cost.
Yes. Let's see, and what we do there on, on that is, the cost with the county boards. And you know, it's all the, to be.
The Pierce real fire installation, you didn't see yet.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion to.
Oh, do you said financially, we don't know that, has it, you have that in the line, do you have something we can pull out of the line?
We have the fire, the fire phone, the rest of the construction.
We're, we're good with that, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all that, we're all that motion first, and that's just.
I, I think your plan is to do this with the construction that's going on.
Yeah, the inside portion is being done now, and electrical work will be done before that, so it's ready for it, so we don't have to review that once we're, once we're done. The outside construction project has been approved, that is, um, they're waiting on a contractor right now on that. I don't have a exact date, I can guess it's gonna be, uh, February, March, twenty, I don't know, it's a bit, you know, that wouldn't go on, because it's a moment, that's sort of big, because that one we've done, we don't, we don't know, it's, I mean.
Well, I think, I would, uh, Chris, although it's been very fiscally responsible, anything they've done, that too, would be getting grants and everything else for all the other equipment, so I would have no issue making a motion to pay for half of this.
Motion made by Kyle to pay for half of the air conditioning unit to be installed in the fire department, or firehouse, or fire.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie. All in favor, indicate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Chris?
I'll do it.
Appreciate your job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Robert O'Prem, uh, help with works and parks and. Good evening. So if you guys can write together, tell us, we come up here.
Yeah, I'm checking.
We didn't hold that against you.
So we had a hiring committee set up, park board members, myself, and Zach, a hiring assistant, and we had six applicants, and he's been, he's very, very happy with the work, he's a special man. And, um, selected a candidate, he's at All Hennessy, lives on the Astro, he's got a great attitude towards city of Pierce, towards golf, I don't know, he's got a, great attention to detail, and very, very skilled, and it's a work ethic for us. I recommend approval of All Hennessy, starting at seventeen dollars per hour, which is in our, what's the finer reach, which is, that's opposition. And we start to get a quick, we're, we're.
What any prior experience with it, uh?
Nothing on the golf course maintenance part, he's got class A, CBL license, so he's got his equipment experience, skidboards, tractors, all this. Fifty percent of the last four years, last.
Very well, I understand, I would handle a lot of equipment, which is important, because it's something you handle, you put, um, working out at the golf course, and for the city. Uh, the pilots that, he will be working at the golf course, but he will also do is take himself involved, help the pub, comedy, and he will be, and he will be, to the full time, DLR surgeon. He uses for snowplow during the wintertime, and other, other projects. And I'll echo, uh, what Bob said, and as I know the interviewers, we asked to interview four people, any of them worked, they've done this job. Uh, we thought, so we're very, very pleased with all four candidates, he just seemed to have the best fit. So, motion higher. Okay, motion been made by Donnie to opposition assistant park, board superintendent, Paul Hennessy. G.I., we inspected that. All in favor, indicate, I say aye.
Aye.
And then, opposed?
Just an update on the whole five erosion, we did get notification from Morrison, that, that. So we're just at the park board, we're gonna process that, and I figure one of our next steps, I guess. The other thing, I, I add, was the cross-country ski trail, it gets some snow fighting, so we're gonna, uh, help Chris, that way, and the other recruitment, so it's all in the advertising, I want to say.
Yeah, and, and that, that's great, people have been using it, get, get the word out, get it on our Facebook page, or even here, Morrison County Record. It's great service to the community, I know a lot of people love it, and I think, I really appreciate your taking initiative on that, Bob, getting it done.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, Chris. Okay, thanks, guys. Chief. I like this guy, he gets dressed up for the, the big box, you know, you know the new dress code? I'm glad we have.
Scissors, if you should cut that tie and keep mounting on the wall back here, it's very lovely.
You're welcome, new council members, Lynn, Don, Jackie, welcome to the council, it's gonna be, be a pleasure working with you. I want to publicly thank Mike, and Steph, and Toby, they're part of the, they all few were part of my police commission at one time, and we've had many, many conversations about some of the worst of the worst when it comes to headaches of the city, so. I appreciate, uh, all your support that you gave me through the years, so, thank you for the service, so. With that being said, we'll move on, I, uh, the first thing this coming Friday, we're gonna be holding, conducting the Alice training, it's an active shooter training at the high school. It's going to be a very large event, um, Terry received information, the record already, we have lots of ambulances, SWAT team, all local first response and fire. It's gonna be a great training scenario for not only just peers, but I think the school in general, it's gonna be a big exercise, and it's gonna open up a lot of eyes, so it's, we're looking forward to that, so. If you see a lot of law enforcement traffic in the city, that's what it's pertaining to, it's gonna be strictly a training event. Um, starts at seven-thirty, we should be done around noon. And then the other thing that I would like to present to you is to start my homework on a new squad car. The current one that is assigned to me, it's a two thousand and thirteen Chevy Tahoe with a hundred and twenty-six thousand miles on it. It's starting to rust out, and I think we hold it much longer, we're just gonna lose some money in the trade-in value, so the value of a new one is right around thirty thousand. I have enough money in my dedicated lines to, to pay for the expense, I just wanna make sure that you're aware, we give you permission to move forward and just, uh, start, uh, start the process, I'm looking into it, see where our true options are. So I don't know if I'll have, could you make a motion, Nicole, or Noel, just?
Um, you know, you better be safe, I'm sorry.
I would make that motion. Put it in your line, Adam.
Yep.
Motion's been made by Lynn to allow Eric to be forward and check into a new squad car.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all in favor, indicate, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What's your, what's your timing?
Yeah, wait, if you, go ahead, now it's like, like, could be up to a hundred and twenty days out, and I'm not gonna be, I just wanna start the process and see what my true option, options are.
Sure.
Um, for trade-in, trade-in value without them seeing it off, it'd be six grand, if they need more, where the county takes it, or the Fergus Falls, to the auction dealer, they do all the process, I don't worry about, so. I'm gonna stick my fingers into that process and just see what truly works, and if I think that it's not worth it, I'll ask Nicole to open up to, to be here, just locally, see if somebody else is gonna jump on it.
So, and we can look at the technical details for budget purposes.
Okay, now it's nice with the Tahoe, they have not changed over, so all the equipment from our current Tahoe carries over to the new Tahoe. And, and the two thousand and nineteen Tahoe, and then the new Ford, so that's why I would go to an SUV like Calvin has assigned. So I don't have to worry about spending fifteen grand on equipment that's gonna be transferred over, with all this equipment fits into a squad car to save my budget a lot of money. Um, the other thing I presented to you, like I do every year, is my annual report. Jackie, Lynn, Don, I apologize, because maybe you didn't have a chance to review it, if there's questions, you definitely can give me a call or stop at the team. There's nothing that has, you know, changed a lot, um, two thousand and seventeen, it had a total of one thousand one hundred and twenty-two calls, this last year we had one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine. That number would be significantly more, however, when Calvin was off for two or three months, it was, you know, it was, that was strictly the old squad car. So them numbers have been more, but every year they sort of increase, but definitely manageable. Um, when you go to page number three for most common calls, some of the ones that are bothering to me are, is when you look at the juvenile contacts, juvenile contacts, and it's strictly, most of them juvenile contacts. That is strictly all calls that we're spending up at the, at our, at our school district. So that's one that I've adjusted to school, I met with the staff, administration today at one o'clock, talking about how many hours we've been spending at the school. So there's, they've been, they've been advised about it, to come up with maybe direction for us to, to move on in the fut- future years, how we can do it. Um, traffic stops are always a good one, because it's not two hundred and twenty-five, it's not about the ticket, it's about, it's, uh, it's people seeing, squad cars lit up, slowing people down, our community to, to slow it down. Um, call service by the day, the busiest day of the, day of the week, we show it Friday, two hundred and ten calls, and then the busiest time of the day is, uh, from two o'clock to eight o'clock at night with three hundred and eighty-nine calls. Any questions for me?
Yeah, very good report, very good detailed report, so, Eric, we really appreciate that, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. And, oh, oh, hold on, a second.
My tie is in its favor, why, I'm sorry. Toby never made me turn around.
You share a town. No, I just wanna point out the fact that, uh, Eric has been given an award, uh, for, for, what's the, what's the award, Henry?
American Heroes Through Shields.
American Heroes Through Shields, uh, there's about a five-minute video out there, I think it's five minutes and three seconds, it's just great to watch, it's, I've watched it, I think, uh, Nicole sent it out on, on the, uh. It's just great to watch, it's, I've watched it, I think Paul has sent it out on the Twitter, it's going to be over...
I saw it on Facebook.
And it's going to be on our website hopefully, or on our TV?
I'm looking into it, yeah.
Okay. I really appreciate that, Eric, it's a very good reflection of City of Peers and our police department, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations on that.
I wasn't happy to be part of it, to be honest with you. Sean Larson nominated me, and I had some choice words for Mr. Larson, but I still did it, but it's, I thought when they came in the film, the way they brought in City of Peers in the school district, I thought I wasn't having some cluster of community of a part in part of it.
And it was, thank you. Thank you. Hey, you're a tiger.
Won't see me in Tiger again.
Nicole, do you have anything?
Sure, so I don't really have too much to report on at this moment, I just came back to a second, I believe. So just doing year-end, month-end, beginning of year, quarterly reports, W2s, 1099s, just kind of give all that stuff compared. So nothing extreme, just getting my feet wet again. I'd also like to thank Toby and Steph and Mike, it's been a pleasure working with you for the last two and a half years, all your knowledge and experience, and your patience in teaching me and everything, so I appreciate that, so thank you. And I'd also like to welcome the new council, I'm proud to work with them.
The checkbook balance is up there again, Dave, and we have to set a little financing to figure out what we want to do with investments, but it's one million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Motion made by Kyle, seconded by Jackie to approve the treasurer's report. All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Please, we have some claims.
Yes, I can tell that, claims, we want something on that.
Steph, this is your job.
I need a motion to repeat the bill. That's always my job. Lynn, you have to take that over.
Is that over the seat?
Yeah, that's the spot.
Total bills of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. I would be entertaining a motion to pay those.
We made the motion only to second your year.
Motion made by Lynn to pay the bills, seconded by Donnie. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Anything else? Anybody have anything else to bring?
Then it's Don's job, this one's your job.
Is that to me? I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Donnie to adjourn, seconded by Jackie. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. I take off comment tonight.